So three models for sports parks operations were identified through the project. First was full local government operation, and this is where the government owns, operates, maintains, and schedules the sports park, incurring all the expenditures and capturing all the revenues. Examples of this include Pearson County, Mecklenburg County, Rock Hill, the City of Durham, and the Town of Cary. So they all operate under this model. Hybrid models, which is the current model for the Buncombe County Sports Park, is when the government owns the park and handles some of the elements of operation of the sports park while having another entity, typically a sports league, maintain the rest. Again, these examples include the Buncombe County Sports Park, as well as the City of Greensboro also operates under this model. The third and final model is nearly fully contracted out, where all operational and maintenance aspects of the sports park are contracted out to a vendor who typically incurs the expenses and captures all the revenues. And an example of this is the City of Asheville holds this model with them. So what we did was we looked at the fiscal impacts of what it would take to run the sports park in-house. You could see on the left-hand side there, we have our maintenance and administrative costs, and what our projection would be to be able to maintain the fields to the current level of service. And through those listening sessions, we did get a lot of positive feedback about the current conditions of the field, that they are really good, being maintained to a high competitive level. And so in order to maintain that same level of sports and ability of play, we'd be looking at two full-time recreation program coordinators, four ground staff, three part-time recreation specialists. And then, of course, we would need the equipment for the grass fields, as well as equipment for turf fields. So as you're well aware, we're under process right now of converting three of the nine fields to turf. We're expecting that those turf fields will be done most definitely by the end of this year, and so that will give us kind of a hybrid model for needing to maintain. So you could see that the first year cost, if we were to bring it in-house, is $720,000. With that, the reoccurring annual costs after purchasing all of the equipment that would be needed to maintain the grass and turf fields would wind up being approximately $576,000. With those costs, there's estimated field revenue that would be incurred by us. We would be gathering that revenue. We're projecting that revenue at approximately $375,000, $375,800. And that would be based on the numbers that you're seeing of the use of nine fields. We anticipate that you can get approximately 58 hours a week per field. And the current contract is for $40 per two hours. So if we went with that rate and moved things out for approximately nine months of possible play throughout the year, based on the weather here in western North Carolina, it comes to 36 weeks. It gives us that revenue total. And so you would see for the first year, we'd be looking at operating in the negative at about approximately $344,000. Years after that, looking at the cost alone of just staffing with no other considerations, we'd be looking at a deficit each year of approximately $200,000 in order to run those fields to the current level that they're at right now and the current state that they're at.
Do we think those costs are similar to what it costs the current organization that's managing the fields, or are they able to do it less expensively?
No, I think that we believe that it's about the same amount of money that they're doing that with considerations of programs that they're running for income that we do not currently have.
So they have additional revenue generation that you're not reflecting here? If we were fully managing it, would we have additional revenue opportunities that are not reflected here, too?
I think we would have opportunities to potentially seek out sponsorships, but we don't currently have a program that we are running for soccer. That is totally out to ABYSA right now. Asheville Shield also runs, so we do not have any kind of revenue that we'd be taking in through those programs.
But they're not out like fundraising for the $200,000 deficit? They identify ways to generate additional revenues as the manager of the facilities that we're not currently contemplating so that it's financially feasible for them to do so?
Correct.
Okay. I guess the point being, or question being, like if we were doing this, and you really said, you know, let's plan to do this, let's do this over time, would we not also do those kinds of things so that you'd have more of a financially self-sustaining model, if that were the goal?
Yeah, I think we could potentially look at it, but building the base, they do a lot of sponsorships within their program. So they do a lot of fundraising with the folks that they have that are already, that are there, right? So if you've got a child who's in playing soccer, they're asking that those children, those youth are helping them fundraise within. And so, you know, they've got approximately, what, 5,200 youth that are already enrolled in their programs, that are already helping them fundraise to be able to do that. And so we would definitely need to be building up that base to come anywhere close to that fundraising through the grassroots effort in that manner.
Yeah. Or I guess the other question would be, like if this financial responsibility for operating and managing the facilities was now like on local government, and it was no longer on, like that $200,000, that's now no longer on the organizations to come up with that funding. I mean, could you potentially adjust what it costs to utilize the field to kind of make up for that deficit, since basically the taxpayers are covering that now and the organizations would not be? Was that thought about, or is the $40, is there a reason like $40 is like an important number to?
Yeah, no, that's just what the current, that's what the current contract is for. And so what I would say is, I think in the future, there's opportunity to incrementally look at what that fee is to be able to hit the objective that you're talking about. But I think that we would want to do that incrementally over the course of a few years.
Sure. Okay, great, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions? So what we've got here is kind of standard components of an RFP, and those include the maintenance and upkeep of sports fields, providing recreational and competitive athletic programs, employing staff designated to maintain and program those fields, provide necessarily supplies and equipment to maintain and prepare the fields for use. And then finally, another standard component is to manage and operate the concession stand out of there. So some of the enhanced components that we're proposing in our RFP, again, based on the feedback that we heard for the sake of transparency and ensuring that everybody feels that there's an equitable opportunity for play, we're going to ensure that one of the components includes an online reservation portal for programs and public-facing calendar showing field availability. We also require that they maintain a master schedule for the sports fields and that this is visible to the open community. We're going to ensure the ability to provide equitable access to programming through outreach and financial assistance, so we'll have that in there, as well as providing, having them provide a yearly use report for us. So with that, we'll have contract oversight, and we'll schedule in designated check-in times to ensure that the RFP and that their contract is being followed. And I would say that, so those are some, we feel that these enhanced components address the issues of transparency that were really the main piece of concern that was come up, that the issuing solely of the RFP also helps with the opportunity for any organization to be able to participate in the competitive bid process. Is there anything else here that you all can think of that you would like to see or have heard? We feel that this covers the full scope of concerns that we heard through our listening
I guess my question would be, I mean, glad like all these conversations are happening. It sounds positive, and so that's terrific. But I guess, and all of those enhancements sound good. But what if there is just sort of a, I mean, I think in the past, part of the concern has been, you know, we don't have some of these elements, but also just that there maybe is just a fundamental disagreement about how much time ought to be available for public use or organizational use of the facilities outside the ABYSA organization. So you could have all this transparency and things like that, but it wouldn't necessarily like mean there's consensus on that question, right? So...
Right. Right, so I think one of the other components that we've been having a conversation about is the percent of access to Buncombe County residents outside of whatever organization would get this RSP. And so that is a component that we can add, that X amount of percent should be designated for community use.
Okay.
All right. So with those draft components, I just want to make it clear that what we'd be proposing is that Buncombe County would retain the below areas of responsibility, just so that everybody's very fully aware. And that includes the maintenance of common areas of the complex, including the playgrounds, restrooms, and shelters. Again, these are all components that we currently oversee. Manage agreements for non-athletic amenities, including the community garden, edible urban orchard, and the disc golf course, as well as maintain and manage all other areas of the sports complex, including the dog park that's out there. So we, in this RFP, we would retain all those pieces of the sports park. And with that, we come down to our estimated timeline. So we're hoping to be able to issue the RFP by the end of the first week of August. Here we are. Based on any comments that we have back by you, we feel like we can get that RFP by the end of this week, potentially. One of the other things that we're recommending, and again, for the sake of transparency to come out, we're going to have this pre-proposal conference. The target date right now is August the 18th. It won't be a requirement, but it'll be something where our staff will be onsite and location to walk around with anyone who wants to look at what it is that we're looking at putting out for bid. Proposals would be due September the 14th, and then we would look to award the contract by October the 3rd, implementing the contract by November the 1st. And so we feel like this is a reasonable timeline based on being able to put out to bid, have questions answered back, and then negotiate a contract and award it ultimately. That's our timeline. And with that, is there any other questions or comments that you have discussion?
And in terms of decision-making around this, is this a contract that would come back to the board for review, or is this made at the staff level? What's the process in terms of like executing the contract?
Yeah, it's made at a staff level. What we'll do is we put together a group of staff to evaluate the RFPs based on a set of criteria that is agreed upon, and it'd be people from, staff throughout different departments as well, rather than just in the recreation service area.
Okay. I mean, if that's the case, then I think, I mean, I think this sounds positive. I would want to get more information on the RFP and the details of that. If ultimately it's not coming back to us, I would at least want to make sure that the board is like fully on board with the elements of that RFP, including, you know, again, I think this question around, like how do we make these, you know, these decisions around allocation of the public use out there, the length of this contract, like when will we have another chance to review it? The last one was pretty long, so when will it come back? So I just think there's a lot of details that if we don't get a chance to weigh in on the back end of it, I'd want to have a chance to weigh in on the front of it.
Yep.
But it sounds, otherwise, I mean, this all sounds positive, and so, other questions or comments? All right. All right. Thanks for the update, appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
All right. Resolution delegating refund authority over overpayments and excise taxes. Hey, Brandon.
All right. We are streamlining, which is always a good thing. So excise tax, I know everyone's excited about it. I can't wait to talk about it either. And we bring these things to you a fair amount. So as a reminder, excise taxes are the taxes that are paid on instruments that convey property. If you get a chance to look at deeds, very often, the taxes, they're in yellow and two different spots called by two different names for reasons I don't understand, but they're both the excise tax. All right. So the tax is based, it's a dollar for every $500 of the real property. Sometimes these get filed in the wrong county. And when that happens, you have to come to the Board of Commissioners and have a hearing to get your refund until this month. And now you can delegate the authority to give a refund to the county manager or the finance officer, and we think that's a great idea. So here's a session law that allows you to do it, and we think you should do it. The process will still involve a written request, and the taxpayer will be required to demonstrate the correct tax has been paid to the correct county before they receive a refund. If their request is denied, they will still have the opportunity to bring that request to this board to have the staff decision reviewed. It's a very quick overview, but that's what we got. It would be on your consent agenda in two weeks.
Okay. Great, thanks, Brandon. Appreciate it. If you've got any other resolutions similar to this, please bring them forward as soon as possible, too. So we are all for this kind of thing. So, all right. Strategic plan update.
Unfortunately, Commissioners, I don't think I'll be as quick as Brandon over there. I apologize. My piece will actually prove pretty short, but you got two other people behind me. So as you may recall, since I've been here, I've been coming up to you all quarterly to give you an update on the strategic plan. I'm happy to announce this is the last time I'll be doing that because I've decided to delegate that to some of our other departmental directors. So we're doing a switch, though, as part of our culture strategy and innovation, we're really empowering our departments to own their business plan and to own their component of the strategic plan. So instead of having me come up here and tell you what Tim Love or Nate Pennington is doing, probably makes more sense just to have them tell you what they're doing and have the subject matter experts be the direct line of communication with you all. So what will happen is about every other month, one of our focus areas within the strategic plan, the department directors and key staff associated them, they will come up here and they will give you an update on their item. Then another benefit is instead of hearing me try to cram out the entire strategic plan in 15 minutes, you're actually going to get 15 minutes of one focus area. So it's going to allow you to go a little deeper and learn a little more than in the past. So I'm excited. Tim Love, I believe, is going to kick us off today with vibrant economy. Then we'll come back in October with educating capable, and then we'll do resident and well-being, then we'll do an environmental and energy stewardship group, then we'll go to the foundational group, and then we'll go to equity, and then we'll start all over. So without further ado, I'll let Tim come up.
All right, good afternoon. So today, I will be chatting with you about the vibrant economy focus area, but additionally, Nate Pennington is going to join to talk about a familiar topic to some of you, that's the comp plan and how that relates to our vibrant economy. The format for the presentation today, so what we want to do is kind of lay some context for what's actually happening in the community. You know, what are some of the community indicators? What does the poverty rate look like? What does unemployment look like? Things like that. And then talk about our strategic plan and the goals in that strategic plan, how we're doing against those goals. But let's also recognize that, you know, our strategic plan goals may be looking well, but there may be things that have changed since the plan came together that we need to start to begin to focus on as we kind of evolve with reality. You know, things like inflation, COVID, any number of topics. So as we start with our kind of laying the foundation, so the state of Buncombe, kind of where are we overall? We've got a few data points here. On the left, we're talking about unemployment rates. On the right, we're talking about basically development and permitting. On the left, you can see that, you know, our unemployment rate is right around 3%. The state is right around 3.4%. This is, of course, a pretty drastic change from where we were just a few years ago when we went from being the lowest unemployment rate in the state to the highest overnight due to restrictions around COVID. And so that was the, if you're tracking with me, that's April, May of 2020, we went to the worst in the state. So overall, there's been an improvement. That doesn't mean everything's okay. There's still work to be done. There's still people that are not engaged in the workforce for any number of reasons, and that's what we want to talk about. Additionally, you know, if we look on the permitting side, you know, no surprise, we talk about it all the time, there's a lot of growth. And so you can see some of those permitting figures. We're comparing year-to-date as well as the same time last year. So you can see overall, you know, we're at 390 permits this month compared to 296 from the same month last year. Year-to-date units, almost 2,000 compared to 1,500 from the prior year. The valuation of those permits, of course, is increasing. So I'm telling you something you already know, which is that there's a lot of growth, but we thought it's an important point to mention. You know, our unemployment's down, our growth is up. There's still work to be done, though, because there's some other metrics that aren't tracking as well. As we continue to talk about kind of where we're at overall, this chart is a lot to look at. We're going to start on the right with the brown. And so for years, and still, Buncombe County has lagged behind the state in terms of average wages. And so that's a critical measure that we're targeting in the strategic plan. We wanted to show you kind of where we are today. So our current average wage for the all-private sector jobs, I think this excludes farm industries in particular, is 2732 across the county. This is a modest increase of about 70 cents from the prior year. So a good thing, the trade-off, though, is we're still lagging behind the state. So you can see the state is closer to 2960 and has seen a $1.76 increase over the same time period. And so while we're seeing an uptick, we're not at the same pace as the rest of the state, which for us, if we're chasing the state, is a problem. But there's another really important factor here, which is inflation. And so we know that inflation is a major issue across the country. And so the big question for us is, sure, we've made a modest gain, but are we keeping up with inflation? And if not, how do we catch up and what are some strategies? So when you heard me start at the beginning of, you know, we've got some goals, we're doing pretty well, but we also need to take a look at where we actually are in reality and sort of course-correct as we go. On the far left, that's a lot to look at. Just to give you an idea of what it is, we just listed occupations that occur in Buncombe County. These are related to BLS, Bureau of Labor Statistics categories. That's why they're kind of, they have funny titles. But you can see the number of jobs occurring in the community, but you can also see the median hourly wage. So it gives you a sense of, you know, what types of occupations are producing the highest wages in our community? And this is just straight Bureau of Labor Statistics data. But just wanted to give you a sense of, when we talk average wages, you know, we're at 2732, you know, which wages are, you know, driving that up versus which wages are potentially driving that down? You'll never hear me say that there's necessarily a bad job in our community, but there's certainly some that pay differently, so.
And Tim, like on the chart, it's got the median hourly wages for the different sectors. In the brown box, you've got the average hourly wages. Would those be different if those were the median wages in the brown box as opposed to the median in the chart, but then the average on the right, or using those terms interchangeably on the slide?
Yeah, it's close. I can get the specific definition, but median is generally where you want to go. It sort of gets to the middle point as opposed to smoothing out that you get from averages, but I'll confirm because that's a good point.
Yeah. Would the median in the brown box, if we use the median numbers there, would those hourly wages be a little bit lower?
Might potentially see a decrease, and that's something we can certainly follow up on. The brown box is setting the stage for, we're creating an internal-facing dashboard so we can look at these metrics on a more regular basis. So we're glad to take that tweak. This is relatively new to us.
Sure, thanks.
It's really helpful to see this data, and one thing that really jumps out as you look at the table on the left is that the sectors that have the highest number of employers are often the sectors with the lowest wages. So I think that's another factor that is important to track, not just the sort of global view of the median or average, but the volume of our local workers who are in industries where the median is $11, $13, $15. I wonder if, as we move forward, that's something we could drill down on some more to really kind of, you know, as we talked about in the past, certainly during the pandemic, in some ways, there's this sort of story of two Buncomes that, and the more we can understand, I think, about the experience of folks who are in that lower quadrant of hourly wages would be helpful.
That's absolutely it. And, you know, we'll get to the goals in a minute and how we tackle some of this, certainly not solving it, but sort of contributing to improving it, so. All right. So then, you know, we shift into kind of the strategic plan and the vibrant economy strategic plan, Buncombe 2025. And so there are three goals on the left that are kind of the focus, and those are tier-one goals. To the right, you get kind of the goals that fall underneath those tier-one goals. So goal number one, and we're going to spend time on each of these today, so if you have questions, we'll definitely dig in. But the first goal is implement land use strategies that encourage affordable housing, near transportation, and jobs. That's largely the work of a comprehensive plan and something that Nate's going to come speak about in just a second. Our next big goal relates to increasing the median household income to catch up with the North Carolina benchmark. And so that wage goal is made up of those tier-two goals right beside it. So focusing on, you know, the average wages of Buncombe County incentivized projects, but also increasing household income for step graduates. Our third goal is total employment in the region's targeted industries. And here we have three tier-twos, and those are to increase small business and startup jobs, advanced manufacturing jobs, and then professional office and IT jobs. And those three are selected because they speak to different parts of the economy, in particular around levels of education and things like that. And we want to grow all levels of the economy, to Commissioner Beachfarrow's point, so that we're not just focusing on the one side of the Buncombe coin, like we're looking at the full picture. The takeaway on this, from a strategic plan perspective, these goals are green. We set goals, and we'll show you what those look like later, but we're on track with where we're supposed to be. Certainly doesn't mean that our work is done. We have a long way to go. All right, so we're going to shift, and I'm going to stop talking for a moment. I'm going to invite Nate Pennington up to talk about goal one, and so that's that land use goal that we mentioned earlier.
Good afternoon, everyone. Tim, am I going to the next one? I'm going to start here. Okay, we're going to switch back and forth because there's going to be a lot of relationship here, so just keep that in mind. But anyway, one of the goals that could be familiar to you all already is already contained within our community-oriented development, and we're going to continue to build on the successes of things that have worked for us already. The progress, the measurables, the deliverables on that are obviously one that we've talked about, maybe I mentioned. Conference plan as well underway. We're also looking at, and especially the Affordable Housing Committee, we've talked a little bit about, we're going to start looking at any and all available properties. So we're taking a hard look at county-owned properties, and we're also looking at some of the school and other related properties as well. And we're also even engaging with other opportunities, looking at any and all available state properties. And then we'll start branching out to have a further expanded discussion as it relates to underutilized properties that maybe some of our community partners hold as well. The affordable housing goals, we've talked a lot about utilization of ARPA funds within the Affordable Housing Committee, and then those have translated into a broader conversation that we've had with you all as well. And then we all know what the issues are. It's no surprise that land is our scariest resource. Said it before, we'll just continue to say it. But site availability is going to become increasingly challenging. We also have our issues as they relate to terrain, but another one relates to floodplain and other properties that have challenges similar to that as well. And we're in a very, very hyperinflated economy right now, and that translates into things like the high cost of building materials, but also interest rates are on the rise, and also everyone is in competition for that same amount of restricted land as well. We're also talking a lot about conservation, so what we have to be very, what we always have to keep in mind is, where we want to conserve lands, we have to look even closer at the lands that are more appropriate for development so that we meet both of those This is a community indicator. Going to bring Matt up for one second to touch on this, but this is the spectrum of all the things that we do. The Affordable Housing Committee, and it was recently discussed with the commissioners, some of the goals associated with the work that's discussed on this slide. Matt, you want to say a couple of things?
Sure. So this slide just represents for the board the investments to date and the activities that have been completed towards reaching those recently adopted board goals. and the activities that have been completed towards reaching those recently adopted board goals in the area of affordable housing. And this is part of, or reflects, you know, the measures and, and the activities that we're undertaking to emphasize creating affordable housing along transportation corridors and using every kind of tool that's available in order to, to advance that particular strategic goal and priority area. I can certainly answer questions about, about this graphic and representation. It's one that the committee is fairly familiar with, as we like to reflect our projects kind of on this. How much of a benchmark are we making towards, towards hitting these adopted goals?
So does this reflect the, is this projects only that have been completed? Or does this also reflect the ARPA funding and those likely projects that will be getting completed?
So we have a couple of different versions of this particular graphic. These are the units that have been impacted through the end of fiscal year '22. And just for perspective, so anything that we have funded and that, and, for example, in a multifamily development, if there's funding associated with it and that hasn't gone to close and CO, and no one is living in it, we're not going to count that unit yet. There are graphics that show activities to which we're committed in addition to ones that have completed. But this was trying to just reflect what's actually occurred at this point in time.
But like, like projects that would have been funded through ARPA over the last months, none of those would be reflected here yet because if we've just been funded them, they haven't been constructed yet.
One thing to report is, I'm happy to announce that coming online, they're in final inspections is the Jasper Apartments. So some of y'all might be, remember that. It's out on US 70, and we're literally doing all their final inspections. And that's definitely going to move the needle in that regard. So specific initiatives related to this goal are, we've talked a, a little with you all about this concept of a future land use map. We don't currently have one. This is very important because what this seeks to do as part of the comprehensive planning process is identify where we want to concentrate our energies. So whether that be to reserve lands for economic development, diversifying that economy, as Tim just spoke about, reservation of lands for institutional needs, reservation of lands for things like hospital and healthcare, emergency facilities, fire, police, those sorts of things. All that's sort of spoken to in a future land use map. And then we grow zoning changes based on that map. It's an industry standard and a best practice in the field of planning. After the comprehensive plan is, is finished, we move into an omnibus series of text amendments that will change both how we look at and review development and how ordinances specifically change themselves. Another item that we've discussed with you all and will continue to discuss are, we've talked a lot about Ferry Road and the potential to develop that property. And then we will then turn our attention, and it may be in tandem, with looking at our properties that are concentrated downtown, looking at underutilized properties, and working with the school, government, with their DFI program to look at the development of those properties. Also, identify opportunities to expand infrastructure. And that's not only related to both public sewer, but there's public water and also broadband. And we'll, we'll hit on that here in just a moment. And we will continue to work on and streamline things that we know already work. So the community-oriented development, which incentivizes density based on good project design, based on where we want to see development in those all important corridors, we will continue to grow. Case in point, never, ever throw out plans that are either older or that are currently in place because they are such a value. You always want to grow those plans. You want to see what was accomplished, what wasn't accomplished. And if it wasn't accomplished, why wasn't it accomplished? So what you're looking at here is from the 2013 Conference of Land Use Plan. And what this does is it really, this is the first thing I'd like to show someone who just moved here. Okay, this is the thing that's often taken for granted. What this is showing you is where water and sewer is generally available in the county. And for those areas that are largely not available, there's numerous reasons. Whether that be high-quality farmlands, steep slopes, protected ridge, forest, Blue Ridge Parkway, the fact that we also maintain in the Barnardsville area the state model watershed program for the protection of public water resources. The Ivy River, of course, supplies Weaverville. And so we exercise some additional restrictions in that area. Not to mention the fact that you've got the Burnett Reservoir in that area, as well as Bee Tree, which supplies the majority of Asheville water. And with that being said, I'm going to flip back to Tim. However, feel free to interject with any questions you might have at this point.
I guess one thought or, or idea I would have after, you know, looking at that, that housing bar graph, that tracker, if you will, makes me think of the, the wage, yeah, yeah, that. Something like that, I guess, Tim, is something that I think would be cool to see in terms of wages. I feel like I've seen that from the EDC before over the years. But something that we can look at trends in terms of wages and sectors. And I think that would be great to see how we're going it, how we're doing.
Good deal. So we're on to our, our next goal. We'll follow kind of a similar path. So we'll start, you know, here's the strategic plan goals. Here's a community indicator that kind of check us on how we're doing in reality. Some focus on strategic initiatives that are moving forward, and then a case in point so we can deep dive a little bit. For this particular goal, we're talking about increasing median household income to the North Carolina benchmark. Some progress that we've seen, just to give you examples, some announcements, you know, the East Fork Pottery, System Logistics and Board Warner, those announcements, you know, 200-plus jobs, an average wage of 26 per hour. The Inclusive Hiring Partners Program, which we'll spend some more time on in a second, 20 full-time placements. But then some discussion on challenges. And so these aren't new, you've probably heard this everywhere, but, you know, one of the challenges we're seeing with our wages, even if we are increasing wages in some areas, those are being batted down by inflationary variables that are largely out of our control, but nonetheless present. Additionally, workforce availability continues to be an issue. If you've talked to Nathan Ramsey recently, you probably heard him say that there's 10,000 vacancies in the MSA. So how do you fill those spots? Where do they come from? And we've, of course, seen those challenges here with our own workforce. So one of the community indicators, you know, we're, we're green on the goals around wages because that's how the goal's been structured. But, so how are we actually doing? So let's look at poverty rates. And so I think this is a really important metric when we're, as a counter to average wages. And what we see is that in 2020, the poverty rate increased from 2019 in Buncombe County. We went from 12.2% to 13.9%. This is counter to the, the presentation on the left where you see the state actually dropped by about a, by about a half a point. So that's a really important indicator because we're performing on our strategic plan, but we're still seeing kind of this increase. So this is an area that deserves some drill down that we should take a look at. Additionally, if we look on the chart on the right, we start to trend poverty rate over a 10-year period, 2010 to 2020. You'll notice the, the light blue sort of wider line represents Buncombe County compared to North Carolina and the United States. What you should be following is that in 2017, there's sort of, 2017, 2018, there's sort of an upward tick here in Buncombe. And so that's not a good thing. We're moving in the wrong direction there, and that's some information we wanted to make sure that we shared with y'all. And so that's roughly moving from about 11 and a half percent to 13.9% in a four-year period. So that's, that's something that needs work. And so I think a, a lot of the work the commission has spent on sort of supporting groups that are in poverty is really important, but we need to continue to bring that into focus, so.
Would you know, like, what percentage of the families that are in poverty are, like, employed families or employed individuals?
That's something I, I can't speak to offhand. I'm, I'm glad to take an action to take a look at it.
Yeah, sure. I mean, it would, it would just, it would be interesting to follow up on that. I mean, recognizing like we have this super low unemployment rate, right? Yet the poverty rate's actually growing up, going up. So just, you know, under, trying to understand a little bit more about, like, the relationship between that chart and some of the jobs data in terms of, you know, what percentage of these people are actually working yet still under this definition of poverty? What, and what percentage are more, you know, they're not in the workforce because they're senior citizens or disabled or for some other reason would be interesting, be interesting.
For sure.
Follow up to look at.
We do include the threshold at the bottom of the slide. So you can see for a four, four-person family, the poverty threshold is 26,500 per year. I just, that doesn't answer your question, Chair, but I, I just gives you some more context for what the number means.
I'd be interested to hear anyone's thoughts on kind of drivers on this and, and what, what might be happening in Buncombe County that we're not seeing happen in other parts of the state? Or we just welcome any insights or thoughts on this from staff or other commissioners.
I'd like to see more data. I'd like to see what Brownie just asked for. I think also the data broken down by quantity of dependence in terms of like the AMI levels based on single people versus family of four, that sort of thing. Are there any trends or takeaways from that kind of data?
So is this being impacted some by the fact, right, our unemployment really skyrocketed more than the state during the pandemic? And then these, are these 2020 numbers here related to poverty being impacted by that in any way?
I think, I, I can't give you like a definitive yes, but I, I think clearly there's an impact through those rates. Clearly, the cost of living in our community has shifted as well. And as, as I've showed you, like, our wages aren't necessarily tracking with those cost of living increases. So I think there's a culmination. I don't think it's a, a single item, but all playing together.
I would be curious, too, to know about the exodus of working moms from the workforce during COVID on the impact of family income. Also in regards then to the lack of childcare as well that has been rather pervasive for some time, but grew exponentially during COVID as well, if possible.
I agree. Although in this particular chart, this is all pre-COVID data, right? So, so whether these things might have actually been exacerbated even further, you know, since COVID. But this is all 2020, so before COVID rolled into the county.
That's true, thank you.
And this would be tied to census data, so some of that may have overlapped a little bit because the census was unfortunately going on in the middle of COVID, but nonetheless, I think your point.
Break out too by race, because I think when you break that out, then you'll begin to see where the poverty is. You know, when you look at the unemployment rate at 3%, but when you look at people of color, it's a different ballgame. But I'd like to see that, yeah, by race.
Sure. And I think the questions that y'all are asking, this is why we wanted to present this. There's, there's different stories to tell, and the reality is, at the end of the day, these are the numbers that matter, and so we have to sort of drill into those, so.
When's the, sorry, Tim, or maybe Nate knows this. When's the next, like, American Community Survey? Isn't that every, is that every five years or two, or?
It's a two-year survey, as I recall.
Seems like we're.
Last was 2018, I believe, so maybe 2022.
So that should be soon.
Yeah, it should be.
Okay.
Yeah, because they wouldn't have.
Two years.
Last one was 2018, and then census in 20, so follow up in '22.
Hey, just while we're throwing out different data, you know, we're interested in, one, one other would be, so we've got the, on that, going back, this is, you don't have to go back to it, but just looking back at the chart that has the, the average hourly wages private sector with the 2732 for Buncombe County. Now, if you calculated it out by 40 hours a week, you would kind of get this, like, okay, here's what someone making that much money makes over the course of the year. But I don't know if the average worker works 40 hours. I mean, some people work more, some people work less. But I assume the average is probably a lesser number than that. So I'm, I guess one other follow-up data point would be like, what's the average individual or median worker in Buncombe County actually bring in over the course of a year? And maybe it's that number times 40, you know, times the weeks of the year, or maybe it's a different formula. But that'd be, that'd be something I'd be curious to hear, too.
For sure. Glad to take a look at all of these things. And some we may find that there's not, you know, a consistent answer, you know. A, a lot of the census and Bureau of Labor Statistics data is formulaic, and they say, this is how we calculate, you know, this particular rate using this denominator, things like that. We'll take a look.
I mean, is it, when you look at the chart, the poverty rate percentage 2010 to '20, and you see sort of how steeply the Buncombe County rate contrasts with the national and state rate, that's the kind of graph you see when there was an incident, right? Like, and I'm just, you know, something that sort of sharply reversed a trend. I'm just trying to kind of think about what, what else happened in Buncombe County in that 2017, '18 window? What other sort of structural level forces do we see that would have caused that level of steep reversal? You know, we have a very strong downward trajectory, it plateaus, and then all of a sudden it's jacked up where everything else continues to go down. Like, what happened?
Although this, this, this chart doesn't talk about inflation or cost of living. This is a pure, this is a chart that purely talks about income, like, percentage of people in the community based on just what they make, not what it costs to live. But do they make enough money to be listed above the poverty rate or below the poverty rate? So it's all about just wages, really. I mean, once you factor in housing and other stuff, a lot of other layers of difficulty get imposed on folks who are in this chart, but this is just in, this is just income. So, I mean, you know, my just sort of intuitive answer is that, you know, a lot of the growth we have in the area, we've got a lot of like really affluent people moving here who actually have pretty good wages and probably some of that positive wage growth that we're, we're seeing overall wage growth in the economy. But down at the, you know, lower skilled level of the workforce, there's still just like, things are going in the wrong direction for that segment of workers who are less skilled. They're just, you know, don't have a college degree. I mean, in, in that part of the workforce, the trends are going in, in the wrong direction. I mean, that would be, in my, in, in our economy has a fair amount of that compared to other parts of our state. So that'd be my just like initial reaction to it, but I'm sure it's more complex than that, but.
Well, we're glad to take some of these actions. We've been writing them down and bring back another look at the data. There's going to be a million ways to slice it, but we'll, we'll give another cut at it. One of the questions we're really interested in, that's not, we didn't have it ready, was to kind of talk cost burden in our community and understanding that. So I think we're, we're kind of aligned. We weren't ready for that today, but that's something we're working on.
If we could even push a little more into sort of the realm of analysis, I'd appreciate that to, as you all do that. What are the drivers and what are the interventions that we think could reverse these trends? So it's very, very helpful to be able to be looking at this in more specific terms. So thank you all for the, the prep work, but I would also love to hear kind of, if we need to bring in some experts to help us understand this. But it's very striking and, and would love to understand as much as we can about it.
Good deal. So in, in terms of, you know, the poverty rate clearly striking, what are some of the, the items that we've been working on? Some of the initiatives to try to drive wage growth where we can? So some of the things that you see from us typically, you know, recruitment of new industries, high-wage industries where possible, that's a part of the strategy. Buncombe County incentivized projects, as an example. Continued growth of workforce development programs, but, you know, taking that a step further. So really reaching into different parts of our community to, to bring people out of existing jobs into higher wage jobs. And so examples of those programs, you know, the Inclusive Hiring Partners Program, the Accelerate Buncombe Program, which the commission just allocated funding towards, and ARPA, as well as Inspire Recovery, which is a program with Philip Cooper and others. Additionally, commission has invested about $2.4 million through ARPA in small business development, job creation, retention, and economic relief. So this is another area where we've seen some interventions or additions in, into this area. One of the areas we wanted to take a moment to focus on today is, as we talk about workforce development programs and really supporting folks getting out of potentially low, lower wage employment into higher wage employment. One of those examples is the Inclusive Hiring Partners Program, which is a partnership between many community organizations, including Buncombe County, the Chamber, Spark Foundation, and others. And what this program seeks to do is to basically identify potential employee- And what this program seeks to do is to basically identify potential employees and link them up with potential employers. Many of the candidates for this program come through the Asheville Housing Authority's Financial Self-Sufficiency Program. And so those folks, if they participate in this program, they have peer support. They're basically guaranteed an, an interview with an employer that's participating in the Inclusive Hiring Partners Program. And as a participant employer in that program, these employers are one required to guarantee an interview, but additionally provide sort of peer support for those that come in through the program. Just some metrics on this particular program. On the far left, you see that there's been about a hundred and forty-five job seekers in the program. Fifty-six proceeded into the placement process with twenty receiving placements with an employer. And so twenty is a modest number for a new program, but that, those are twenty individuals that were able to secure employment with an employer, providing an average hourly wage of eighteen sixty-two, which is that second bubble that's on your chart. To give you an example of the employers that are employing folks out of the Inclusive Hiring Partners Program, there's the pie chart on the right. And so you can see the employers are color-coded, but examples here, we've got Eaton, Silverline Plastics, Spark Foundation, East Fork, Mayhec, Thermo Fisher and Conmet. So these are employers that have accepted an IHP interview, but then employed that person, and the average wage of those twenty placements is eighteen sixty-two. Additionally, for the program, fifty-six percent of the program is represented by BIPOC participants. And so this is a workforce development program that's a little bit different than what we've traditionally done, focused on, you know, bringing people into higher wage opportunities that maybe didn't have access to those prior. So just one example, not the only, certainly not the last program we'll do and will continue to grow it. An example of a program moving into the future that would build upon this would be the Accelerate Buncombe Program, which again, Commission funded. This seeks to take it one step further, whereas IHP is saying, let's secure an interview. Accelerate Buncombe is saying, let's take an individual that's willing to go back to get additional credentials through an eight-week, twelve-week, sixteen-week program. Let's secure the training for that and help that person afford to go back to school by providing a living wage while they take that a credent, credential. So in that way, sort of upskilling, but taking one of those obstacles out of the way, which is, I can't afford to go back to school because I still have bills to pay. Really excited about that program, more to follow in the future, and thank the Commission for their support on that. Before I move to the next goal, any questions? All right, our third goal, our final goal for today talks about total employment in the region's targeted industries. We'll talk about what those are in just a moment. Some examples of the progress, we've already mentioned some of the expansions recently. I want to take a minute to talk about the One Buncombe Fund, which was a pretty crazy idea in twenty twenty, but just a reminder, I raised almost two million dollars for small businesses in Buncombe County and helped retain over a thousand jobs. And so that happened through generous donations from the community, but also through multiple iterations of funding from Commission. And certainly y'all pushing us to, to drive the needle on that. Additionally, as we talk about increasing employment across the county, one of the areas we don't talk about as much is broadband access. And the, the strength that that can have in allowing someone to, one, go back to school, letting someone, you know, in school, complete their, their work from home, increasing accessibility to telehealth and all of those things. We'll talk more about that on the next slide, but just wanted to, to mention that. Here, our challenges remain the same, workforce availability, big time problem, ten thousand vacant positions across the MSA. And then another area, kind of tricky, hiring competition. This is a good thing if you're in the workforce and, and seeking to make a move because you're likely able to secure higher wages. Would never fault anybody for doing that. However, it does create some potential competition and instability in some of our critical functions. And so as I think about, you know, our emergency services or firefighters, things like that, a lot of competition there, which can be a good thing for wages, but creates a little bit of instability potentially. And just wanted to mention that. As we look at our community indicators, so these three graphs correspond to the tier-two goals that I mentioned earlier. So overall, we're trying to increase employment overall. We're focusing on three areas. One is small business and startups. The other is advanced manufacturing, and then the third is professional office and IT jobs. And we use this terminology, these are NACE codes, Bureau of Labor Statistics terminology, that's why we pick them. The reason these three buckets are chosen is because they speak to different levels of educational attainment and so different economic opportunities for folks. So as we talk about professional office and IT jobs, you know, this is maybe traditional university and education, maybe higher. So trying to grow those jobs, and you can see that we're slightly ahead of our goal there. Right around ten thousand five hundred jobs in Buncombe County. As we move to the middle, we talk about advanced manufacturing jobs. Here, we're, we're speaking to trade or technical community college level education, maybe high school education. You can see we're a little bit below where we want to be on that, on that measure. But in general, you know, we're within the margin of error for being green. So overall, we're still green on this goal. And as we shift over to the far left, we look at small business and startup jobs. Here, education, less important. Lots of people open small businesses with all different levels of education, and we think it's important to grow that sector. It's not just about high-tech growth, IT startups. It's about people that are, that you know, that are artisans or musicians or any number of things. So you can see that we've kind of have an uptick there, a little bit of a plateau. That's more about the data source we're using than that we've actually plateaued. It just hasn't been updated again since the last time we measured it. So those are our community indicators we're chasing. Again, trying to grow the economy in different sectors that speak to different levels of education, that provide opportunities for more folks. Some of our strategic initiatives here, we mentioned broadband. I'm going to save that. We'll talk a little bit in a second. Completing infrastructure projects across Buncombe County. There are some specific ones in particular that we've been tracking with. So the Anka Commerce Bridge, the Smokey Park Bridge in particular, connecting that to the roadways out in Anka Commerce Park, super important. DOT tells me that we'll be able to drive over that by the end of the year. Exciting. Biltmore Park West, I'm, I'm sure you've seen the, the bridge off of Brevard Road is complete, the stoplights hanging, and that'll soon be accessing the Pratt and Whitney site, which is scheduled to do an opening later this year. And then the Ferry Road site, which we've talked about a lot and sort of bringing that site to market, but the need for road infrastructure in particular, as well as water and sewer. The last bullet here, Nate already mentioned it, so I'm not going to get into it, but thinking about the land use map, the future land use map, and where there's areas to preserve certain types of parcels for certain types of development. That could be industrial, commercial, or it could be public safety, or it could be educational, but thinking about that and how that can drive sort of job growth down the, down the future.
Tim?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry to.
Please.
Pause you and, um, at the risk of putting you on the spot, what's the like thirty-second update on the Bridge to Nowhere and the, the Greenway out Nega?
So the, the Bridge to Nowhere will soon be completed. And so that, that's the Smokey Park Bridge. And so the, you know, the bridge exists. Recently, the Hakan Industries Company has opened their doors. They've completed their building out there. They're right up from New Belgium. And DOT has completed an initial access road that can get to that site. That's all done. On that access road is a sidewalk, a complete street sidewalk. And now DOT is finishing connecting that access road to the bridge. And so that project will, you know, as long as weather, contractors, all that, that should be completed by the end of this year.
Awesome news. Thank you.
Yes. Awesome news. The Greenway remains under design. We're in our design phase. We're currently doing some environmental work out there. One of our potential alignments just required us to do a little bit more soil sampling, which is tricky out there because that's all brown field and poking holes in the ground is not desirable out there unless you have to. So.
Okay.
Thank you for putting me on the spot again. So case in point, for this one, we wanted to talk about broadband because that's pretty exciting stuff. So on this map, what we're showing you, there's a lot of dots. I didn't give you the color codes, but I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what it is. So each color-coded dot represents a different provider that is offering to provide fiber to the home to a household. And so each of those dots represents a household in Buncombe County that through the Great Grant process, there was an application submitted by a provider to provide fiber to that house. And so this is really exciting because these seven thousand households currently don't have fiber to their homes. They may not have anything better than a DSL connection that gets them three megabytes per second, which is significantly lower than the three hundred megabytes per second you likely get at your house if you live on a fiber connection. And so I wanted to show this to you because wanted to see the potential opportunity through the Great Grant process. We anticipate hearing back on Great Grant applications by the end of August, so the state tells us. We're hoping it'll be sooner and that it's not delayed, but the, the point being some of these households will be taken off the map, meaning that they will receive fiber to the home. The money that's being used for this is ARPA money, and so they're all, the state is on the same timeline as us. So that match that y'all put forward through ARPA that requires an obligation by twenty-four and a spend by twenty-six is the same with the state. So we're all tracking on the same path. Our hope is that we'll hear about a Great Grant application soon that would award at least one of these projects. There's six depicted. And then we would move into the next stage of state funding, which is the CAB program, where we would likely get to pick another one to two projects. So another set of color coding on this map to move forward as well. So while I will dream that we will get all seven thousand households by the end of the year, we probably won't, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll get two to three of these projects, which will be a substantial move for broadband access in, in the county. So. That's correct. The current great cycle will be followed by the CAB, and then it's envisioned through infrastructure dollars from the federal level, that this whole cycle will repeat again with similar funding amounts next year. So it's very likely we could see a lot of this addressed in the, in the following year.
It's, it's competitive, but, but we were roughly expecting all seven thousand by the end of next calendar year. Is that what I'm?
That's the hope.
Okay.
You know, I, I can't, there's a, so these applications were submitted, the way the state has set up the process, that these applications can be protested by incumbents, and so we'll see how that shakes out. But the hope is that many of these projects get addressed. And then, yes.
And the colors are different providers, I see. Are you prepared to, just for my knowledge, can we name, it looks like four or five providers. Do you know the names of those off the top of your head?
That's right. This is public information, so I'm glad to share it. Charter, AT&amp;T, Frontier, Skyrunner and French Broad Electric. So we had five providers, six applications. If all of these applications were funded by the state, which is what we would love to see, the ARPA funds that you've allocated as a commission would be sufficient to handle the match for all of them. So our push on the state is to fund as much as you can and just get out of the way, because we're, we're ready to match. But there's, there's more to it than that. Additionally, the state has indicated that every county will get an award through this current Great Grant process. And then if additional funds are left over, counties will get secondary awards. So we're guaranteed that one of these projects will pass. Based on what we know about the scoring, it's likely to be based on cost per household. And so I can tell you what those numbers look like, and some of the larger projects have a lower cost per household. So that's a good thing for us from a scoring perspective. So.
I know we've got a, a closed session to go into for some reviews we're going to do this afternoon, so we can't take too much more time in this discussion today. There's a lot of real big picture items. I'm sure we could talk about them a lot. Just a couple of quick questions I had before we move on. One is probably Nate's question. One is either, you know, some of these issues are of course getting looked at in the comp plan, you know, in detail as well. So either in our strategic plans or in the comp plan context, do we have any specific goals around the what our view is in terms of the growth of vehicle miles traveled in the county? I know it's kind of a wonky term, basically means like how much are people having to drive to go about their lives, right? So do we have a goal on that? That's my first question, and I might have a follow-up.
Yeah, so it's a little too premature at this point, but I just got done doing some reviews from the consultant in our long-range planning team that focused heavily around both vehicle miles traveled as well as there's a couple of different ways you can measure that, but I guess you're specifically asking about, we want to look at the trends associated with, specifically when we got into this plan, staff was very interested in sort of the daily influx of folks that, that live outside Buncombe that have to come inside Buncombe to work. And then there's also when you finish work, there's obviously the return home. Do you mean in that regards?
Well, yes, but also probably even in terms of total numbers, the number of people who just live in Buncombe County and work in Buncombe County, you know, how much driving people have to do, you know, to go about their daily lives with the pattern of development that we have today in which, you know, but then for the comp plan purposes, like what will that look like in the future based on the pattern of development that is yet to be created?
Absolutely. And then kind of in the midst of all this, when COVID occurred, then we saw a huge monkey wrench thrown into that because then we had, this map is a good way of, of showing the work that we need to do. We had the large influx of people that have now worked at home that now will continue to work at home. So we had to factor that in as well. So to that, to that point, what we are doing is we're working with Land of Sky, folks like Dr. Roderick, on some work that they're already doing to sort of map where all this travel is occurring. And then on top of that, we'd also like to study sort of the impact of folks that can't afford to live here and have to live elsewhere as well, that still would then need to return to travel to come to work as well.
So I guess, I guess just, you know, my kind of parting thought on that would be, and again, maybe it's first, maybe it's something we embed within strategic plan, or maybe it goes into the comp plan. I feel like, you know, we're talking about all these issues around smart growth. We want to steer growth to where infrastructure can support it. We want to steer it away from these, you know, more pristine natural areas and prime ag land and stuff like that, steep slopes. I just feel like we need to become more specific around exactly what the metrics are that we're hoping to achieve from all that. Like, I think, I think I read from the staff analysis on this that in the comp plan that is forecasted that we might see as much as seventy thousand additional people move to the county over the next twenty years, which is like almost dropping another city of Asheville into the county. So I hope that turns out to be an overestimate personally. I'd love to see that be a lower number in, in terms of total growth of the area, but regardless, it's going to be a lot of additional population growth and associated new construction of new residential units for those folks to live in, right? So, so like the most important question probably facing this is like, where are those units going to be built? Are they going to be mostly built like in areas that, you know, are within the existing developed landscape? That can be, that either are or could be served by high-frequency transit in the future, or are in really walkable areas close, you know? So that, and that all kind, kind of gets to the, how much driving people have to do, right? So in a way, like the, the vehicle miles traveled thing and maybe having a goal around like, we want is, here's what we think is going to happen if we just kind of continue down the path we're on now. Here's what realistically we think it might look like if we focus growth in these areas where it makes the most sense. It seems like an important, it measures a lot of different good outcomes or bad outcomes, right? So I, I just, I'm, I'm curious if we might, coming out of these plans, have a specific goal of like, we want to bend that curve and here's how much realistically we, we think we can. I, I also think, you know, I would advocate for the idea that as we think about these potentially seventy thousand new residents of the county, that we really try to come up with specific goals as well for, like exactly what percentage of those we think we could shoot for in terms of locating that growth in areas that we would consider like preferred growth areas, you know? Areas that can be well-served by trans, high-frequency transit, walkable. You, you, you know, we can't, it's a, it's a free country. Ultimately, people can make these decisions and, and need to based on various considerations they have, but but what percentage of that seventy thousand realistically do we think we can, we can, we can? can, we can support a pattern of development where they do live in areas that are going to be best for kind of the overall future land use pattern in the county? So is it half, is it 75%, is it 80%? I don't, I don't know, but those are some of the questions, I think, I'm hope, I'm hoping that we can articulate better as we kind of come out of this, the comp plan process and the strategic planning process.
No, I think that's excellent train of thought, and that's why we couldn't just do a vanilla plan, sort of focused within, within our borders. We really have to look at the regional approach and have conversations and look at the trends that are occurring in McDowell, and Madison, and Haywood, and Henderson specifically. You know, they've got a massive development occurring down there with the Taproot subdivision, so it's really, I look at it too, as, okay, what can we reasonably house here versus where are people going to be housed outside of the county? And then what does that look like in terms of transportation patterns, vehicle miles traveled, working with our COGS specifically, and not just Landis Sky, it's isothermal, and what does that look like? So I think, I applaud your question, because I, I think we really, really need to work on formulating some of those goals as well.
And, and I think also, within Buncombe County, I think it also behooves us to do more, to think about partnering more with the City of Asheville, too, because really, when we talk about smart growth, like, we'd love to see, like, all these folks are trying to get to jobs in the heart of Asheville, right? Or a very high percentage of them are. So to the extent that we can really increase the amount of residential growth, like, in the heart of Asheville, is for the better for our county and really for the region, because it's, it's the job center and it's the commercial center, and the healthcare center. So, so, you know, we see a lot of growth in the downtown area, but a lot of it's like tourism, commercial stuff, we don't see a lot of residential, residential growth. I mean, I feel like this is one of the places where our pattern of development is really not what the community wants to see and doesn't want to see for the future, but there's a lot of economics driving it in that direction now, so like, what can we do to change that? I don't have the answer to it, but I feel like it's such our job to kind of think a lot more about that question, because in terms of, like, right direction, wrong direction, I think those set of issues would probably be on the top of a lot of people's list in our community.
Well, very soon, we were going to have those conversations, and they will involve conversations like densification of the former ETJ, what, what does additional development look like in and around our municipalities? And I believe that we will receive quite a bit of feedback in terms of what that looks like. In terms of the right answers, there are getting ready to be some very tough conversations ahead. And I don't think that there's any right or wrong answer specifically, I think that we're going to have to come to some compromise when it comes to differing opinions. But I would, I would tell you very soon that those conversations, not only just related to density, but also what does infrastructure look like in the future? Where is it appropriate to extend the infrastructure? I think that certainly has to be talked about as well. And since we're not a water provider or a sewer provider, we've got to make sure that we get all of our partners in the room. And also, I think that when we talk about things like energy and things like transportation, but it also includes making sure that we have NC DOT, Duke Energy, and others at the table as well, so that we think about not just county goals, but the organism as a whole in terms of achieving our overall aspirational goals.
All right, Commissioners, other questions, feedback on this for now? All right, Tim, Nate, appreciate y'all and everyone's working on all these important initiatives. We do have one other item we need to take care of before we go into the closed session, which is the caucus appointment for the county commissioners. So I circulated an email that we received from, I guess, the County Commissioner Association meeting that helps organize all this stuff. They pointed out that the county commissioners need to appoint one of our members to attend an upcoming caucus meeting. Commissioner Vice Chair Edwards has expressed a willingness to do that on our behalf, it's a virtual meeting, I think. So wanted to see if there was anyone else interested in attending?
That sounds good to me.
Okay, well, great. So I think we should vote on this, I think Mr. Free has advised that we do need to actually formally vote to appoint our, because then that person will vote on our behalf at that County Commissioner Association meeting. So if there's consensus, let's add that to our agenda for our regular meeting this evening. So I'll ask to add that to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. All right, Commissioners, I think we've gone through everything on the agenda, we do have a need for a closed session. Mr. Free, would you share the purpose of the closed session?
Question, or, you don't normally take action at the briefing agenda, and this is a closed session, I'm not asking for any action.
Okay.
Did you want to do it when we begin the open session at 5:00 or following the meeting? It's just sort of unusual, the way it's proceeding here.
Okay, I thought we needed to vote to go into closed session, though, or do we not need to do that?
So, you must know, as the closed session, they probably tend to be controlled.
Okay. Okay, all right.
That'll work, thanks.
All right, I'll adjourn the briefing meeting. All right, that's adjourned. All right. Could you share information on the purpose of the closed session we're going to have?
Yes, sir. So this, going to closed session for two matters, asking for a motion going to closed session pursuant to 143-318-11A3 to discuss a legal matter regarding amichi brief to the US Supreme Court to join that. And second, and that would be the 303 creative, US Supreme Court Number 21-Bash-76.
Commissioners, may I interrupt briefly quickly?
Yes. Yes.
I think this closed session really is about the personnel or nothing else. Later this afternoon, there was another closed session after the work, but this one right now was just the personnel.
Yeah, correct. So we'll just adjust the personnel items in this one, we may do another closed session later on the other item. All right.
So that'd be 143-318-11A6 to discuss a personnel matter with the board.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to go into closed session to address the personnel items?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, we're in closed session, and our intention is to come back, hopefully before 5:00 or thereabouts, to adjourn the closed session and we'll begin the regular meeting.